It's seven o'clock right now on my phone, so I will follow this meeting order. Annual meeting of the town of Rochester. Welcome, everyone. I'm Dan McKinley. I'm your moderator, at least until the first article. We elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Happy to serve this past year. We'll see how that turns out. I would like to share an invocation that's being used in a lot of town meetings around the state. And it just sort of focuses us and revisits a theme of community. Welcome to the Rochester Town Meeting. We've come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our state itself. We've come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our ideas, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right." Let us remember that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams that's true and as high as ours. Let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. So if you would stand for the pledge of allegiance, if you'd go ahead and remove your hats. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the flag of which it stands, under the Constitution, under the Constitution, under liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Want to go over a few things before we dive into the business of the evening. Remember that meetings are governed by state law and Robert's Rules of Order. Oh, I think that volume just go up? Yeah, okay, all right. Thanks, Nick. Meetings are governed by state law and Robert's Rules of Order. And to remind us of a few of General Robert's rules and make things go smoother. The business that we're going to conduct tonight is on pages four and five of your town report. You may speak twice to an article, once when recognized by the moderator for the first time, and a second time when anyone else who wishes to speak has spoken for a first time. And you'll be limited to five minutes, if you please, to your remarks each time. If you're able, please stand and use the loudest voice you can, so we all can benefit from your ideas and your wisdom. Sorry, we don't have a microphone to run around through. For non-election articles, we'll attempt to decide by voice vote. And if that proves difficult, then we will have a division of the House by raising of hands and counting hands. At the request of one voter, we can do a division of the House. If that still proves difficult or there's controversy there, someone can ask for a paper ballot. And if there are six other voters who would like to agree with that, then we would have a paper ballot. Remind you that select board, lister, auditor, road commissioner are some of the offices that require a paper ballot by state law. Remember that debate can be stopped or cut off during an article by calling the question or previous question. However, you have to wait to be recognized before you can call that question. You can't just shout, call the question, can't just shout it out. You have to wait for the moderator to recognize you. And then two-thirds of the Assembly must vote to stop debate. Speeches or your remarks must be confined to the merits of the question, and no one will be allowed to engage in personal attacks of anyone else in the room. The role of the moderator is to help you accomplish your business expeditiously and fairly. Please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you in the order that I see your hands come up. Please state your name for the record and speak as loudly as you can. I will try to recognize you by name, but I'll blame the lights and masks and many other things on why I might not remember your name, even if I've known you for 30 years. So please excuse me if I have a lapse there. I want to remind you that a moderator's ruling can be challenged, and I encourage you to do that. It is my goal to do the will of the Assembly, not my own agenda. You need not be recognized by the moderator with your hand raised before you wish to challenge. Just call out, you want to challenge that ruling as the moderator. And if there's a second, then I will explain the ruling, and then everyone gets to speak once on that, and then we'll have a vote on whether my ruling is sustained or not. But please do not hesitate if my ruling seems odd or wrong or to challenge. It's part of the process to do the will of the Assembly. Let's see. Similarly, if you think I'm violating Robert's Rules, please call out point of order, and I'll consider your concern. I'm your moderator, but by no means an expert. I mean, this once a year, not quite have it all memorized yet. The moderator can use unanimous consent, allowing the Assembly to do business in expedited fashion rather than following the rules, asking for a motion, a second, debate, and then a vote. For example, if someone wanted to speak for a third time on an article, we would suspend the rules and say they could speak again if there are no objections. But if someone objects to suspending the rules or any unanimous consent, please just call out "I object", and then it would take two-thirds vote to suspend rules. So please, as I'm using unanimous consent, I'm not trying to bulldoze you, but if you're concerned about it, please object, and we'll talk about it. At this time, I'd like to ask those that are not registered voters of Rochester to raise their hands so we can welcome our guests and know who we have. Got a couple folks, welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight. I'll remind you that unless there's suspension of the rules, that non-voters may not speak or vote, or non-residents may not speak or vote on any articles. But it's our custom here in Rochester to allow our visitors to speak on matters of the town. I wish to use unanimous consent to say that if there are no objections, once again, we'll allow our visitors to speak. Don't have any opening remarks from the Select Board, but we do have Representative White here this evening. He'd like to share a few words with you to open us up and see what's going on in the state. Kirk, do you want to come right up?
Good evening, everyone. It's great to actually be in person with you all. My name is Kirk White. I am your state representative, and I am on the House Commerce and Economic Development Committee. The House in this year is really focusing on workforce development and all the things that get in the way of that. And so part of what we're trying to do is, a lot of our companies can't find enough workers who are qualified, so we're trying to find ways to incentivize and remove blocks to those kinds of those things, trying to get more money into nursing, education, trying to improve our career and technical education programs, because, you know, they're trying to get a plumber these days, right? So the legislature as a whole is working on workforce development. We're also working on, some companies have said, well, you know, I got somebody from out of state that will work for my company, but when they try to come here, they can't find any place to live. And so housing is another issue that is getting a lot of attention in the legislature. And then also, young families try to move here, and there's no childcare. And so again, that's another thing. And a lot of the things that, as I'm sure your past representative can attest, is in the legislature, there, things tend to be what's called siloed. Everyone's got their area of expertise, and no one talks to anyone outside of their area of expertise. And so instead, what happens is no real solutions happen. Everything's sort of, you know, well, we'll just take care of our part. And the legislature is trying really hard at this point to overcome that. And so there are a lot of committees that are being created, working groups and stuff, that are crossing those lines. So that the committees that are doing workforce development and committees that are doing housing and childcare, and all those are actually working on these collectively to try and break down these barriers. That's a large part of what the legislature is working on. My own committee has been working on, you know, it's Commerce and Economic Development. The economic development stuff is fun, because we're trying to find ways to help businesses get started and grow in the state. And then there's Commerce, and Commerce is exciting things like insurance regulation, which after I leave here in a couple days, I'm going to a four-day conference on insurance regulation. And I can't imagine that will, that'll be more fun than I can imagine. So, but my own committee, Commerce, Economic Development, big things we've been working on, we've been working on a large deal for workforce development, again, you know, trying to get more trained, skilled workers in every sector, including healthcare, nursing, construction, education, teachers, again, childcare providers, all those things. So we're really working on that. Another thing we're trying to do is, we're trying to, the pandemic really showed a lot of problems with our unemployment insurance process. And, you know, a lot of people fell through the cracks, a lot of people, it didn't work for. And so my committee is the one that gets to kind of, you know, tear it apart and see what we can do to make it work better for people. One of the other things my committee's been working on is, there's a program called the Vermont Employment Growth Incentive Program. They call it VEGI. And it's supposed to incentivize businesses to hire, you know, to start more jobs, get more jobs. And at this point, where the question is, is we've got lots of jobs, you don't have enough people to fill them. And so the question is, is this, we're throwing $5 million a year into this program, and is that really a good use of our money? And a lot of people on my committees don't think it is. And so, but, you know, you have state bodies that have been running something for a while, and they sort of like to keep running it. And so we're struggling and battling with them about it. Other things are data privacy. My committee is really looking at data privacy. You know, what happens when somebody steals your data and sells it on the internet? And how we can cut down on that and reduce that? And so other kinds of things like that. That's what my committee does. If you haven't seen, I post three exhausted posts on Front Port Forum, and also on my Facebook page, and I have an email list. And so if you want to know the minutia of what goes on up there, I can happily share it with you. I also really try to explain to people how things work there and how they don't, so that if you've got a problem and you want to figure out how to get your problem resolved, I try to give you advice on how to get that to happen. And certainly, if there's anything I can do to get involved, you know, with state agencies that are kind of stonewalling you, I'm always available to do that. So I hope you'll reach out to me. I'm always looking forward to hearing from people and trying to represent you as best, as that is possible. So thank you, and thank you for letting me be here. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative White. Appreciate the time. All right, we will get into the business of the night with our warning. Town of Rochester, Vermont, annual town meeting to be held Monday night, March 6, 2023, 7:00 p.m., Rochester School Auditorium. Legal voters of the town of Rochester, County of Windsor, State of Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet in the Rochester School Auditorium, 222 South Main Street in said town on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. to transact the following business. If there are no objections, I will not read the entire warning, but I'll read each article as we go through them in person. Frank? That's our first piece of business. Though there are no objections, not reading the entire one, we'll start with Article One. Article One, to elect a moderator for the ensuing year. Martha?
I would like to nominate Dan McKinley to be re-elected as moderator.
Dan McKinley's been nominated. Any other nominations? Really, we typically don't need seconds for officers, but I appreciate the thought. Any other nominations? Then we'll close nominations, and I'll ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Dan McKinley for moderator, which begins now. I'm going to put out lawn signs next year to campaign for the moderator. Article Two, to elect all town officers acquired by law. First in that article is to elect a select board term, a select board member for a three-year term. Nancy?
Nancy Bulley. I'd like to nominate Frank Severy, succeed himself, and compliment him on the fine job that he's done in the past three years.
Frank Severy's been nominated.
I would like a second back?
Seconded, I have a second back. Frank, could you have?
I'll give a second.
Okay. Any other nominations for Select Board? And I will close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Frank Severy, for Select Board member for a three-year term.
Welcome back.
Number two of Article Two, to elect a lister for a three-year term. Nominations. And back.
Jess Arsenal, long nominee, who we donate?
Who we donating nominated? Seconded by Frank? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we will close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for, who we donate for a lister for a term of three years. Willie? Congratulations. Number three of Article Two is to elect a collector of delinquent taxes for a term of one year.
I would nominate Rebecca Klein.
Rebecca Klein's been nominated. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nomination, we'll close nominations. And no, don't read a second on officers. Ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Rebecca Klein, for collector of delinquent taxes, for term of one year. Congratulations. Rebecca, if you're here. Number four. To elect a library trustee for a five-year term. Nominations. Frank?
I'd nominate Doreen Jones.
Doreen Jones has been nominated. Any other nominations? Diane Reitner? Okay, all right. Doreen Jones has been nominated, and I don't see any other nominations, so we'll close nominations, and we'll ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Doreen Jones, for library trustee, for a five-year term. Number five of Article Two is to elect a trustee of public funds for a three-year term. Nominations. Nancy?
Nancy Bulley. I'd like to nominate Mike Harvey.
Mike Harvey's been nominated. Other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Mike Harvey, for trustee of public funds for a three-year term. Thank you, Mike, if you're here. Help me out. Number six of Article Two, to elect a cemetery commissioner for a five-year term. Nominations. Nancy?
Nancy Bulley. I'd like to nominate Tom Paquette.
Tom Paquette's been nominated. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, we'll close nominations and ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Tom Paquette, for cemetery commissioner, for a five-year term. Congratulations, Tom. Article Three. So the voters authorize payment of real taxes in four installments, with due dates being Tuesday, August 15, 2023, Wednesday, November 15, 2023, Thursday, February 15, 2024, and Wednesday, May 15, 2024, by physical delivery to the tax collector before 4:00 p.m. on those dates, with postmarks not accepted as proof of delivery. Someone like move that article? Nancy moves? Seconded? Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? I said it. Article's fast. Article Four, so the voters authorize total highway and general fund expenditures of $1,313,277, of which $921,967 shall be raised as taxes. Can we get someone to move it and second it? We'll get right into our discussion. Frank moves it. Second. Somebody want to second that? Nancy, I'm sorry, Sandy, second? Any discussion? And back there, is that Kevin?
Would this be the very kind of proposal that that, that the article?
It would be.
I would like to propose that we raise this amount slightly. I never thought I'd say that, but here I am. And the amount would be $3,248. And that would make up the amount that Granville First Response requested for their services for the upcoming fiscal year. It's a small amount of money, but it would be a great show of support for the volunteers who do this for that agency.
Refresh my memory, do I need a second on that? So the number was 3,248?
I didn't quite hear exactly what you meant, the reason for this.
I could do it first response, but I couldn't hear the whole thing. I'm sorry.
Were we certain Granville First Response asked for a certain amount of money? It was cut by the $3,248. Like I say, it's not a lot of money, but it would show support for the volunteers.
All right, discussion ends, Patty, did you want to?
I do have a second.
Okay.
Can you hear me? The organization Granville First Responders, which is GFR, was developed after our own Valley ambulance service's operations due to several reasons. GFR arrives on a medical scene without an ambulance, so can only provide initial first aid or CPR not able to transport. The GFR funding comes from Rochester, Hancock, and Granville, and is based on population. The Werva budget, White River Valley Ambulance, for Rochester, had a significant jump in their funding requests for this upcoming year. We value their service as they are highly qualified and capable of providing first responder care and transportation both timely and consistently. It was the Select Board's decision to support the increase of Werva and to continue to fund GFR at a lower funding figure to continue to support the team and encourage improvements. This was a notice sent to GFR on January 11. Thank you for the time spent in preparing both initial budget presentation and secondary information regarding the finances and operations of the Granville First Response during the past year and expectations of the upcoming budget year. The Select Board members of Rochester also must consider the quality of service, services rendered to its population along with the cost, and have made the decision for the budget year of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, to reduce the funding to Granville First Response to $3,500. The Select Board is still very supportive of the first responders and are pleased to continue to supply support to this organization. We fully expect to see a larger and more available membership and better coverage during daytime hours in the next 12 months, plus the issues surrounding dispatching worked out so that communications are at the optimum speed and quality. Once these goals have been achieved, we will be more than pleased to consider supporting higher levels. I would suggest keeping records during the upcoming budget year on a Rochester per-call basis to present data that supports improvement to our Budget and Finance Committee in the fall of 2023. End of that letter. It is our sincere hope to see improvements to the infrastructure and response rate for GFR, which is why we continue to place support to the organization. It was not an easy decision during a year of very high increase in our tax rate to decide where tax dollars are best spent. Since January, Werva has had conversations with GFR on how Werva could help support GFR and its members. A plan moving forward is to meet with first response service chiefs throughout our valley to better their services with education, training, and recruitment for all in our valley and beyond. GFR has contacted the Vermont EMS office to explore transport capability licensing. An increase in response rate since December of 2022 has also been noted. GFR is working on resolving dispatching issues, and we are currently working out questions about their budgeting figures. Once we feel we have the correct figures and continue improvement in response rates along with a regenerated alliance with Werva, the Select Board will once again revisit funding requests from GFR. Thank you.
Okay, I jumped around a little bit, Kevin proposed amendments. I need a second for that.
Second question.
Thank you. Discussion. Go ahead.
About a month ago, I had a medical issue, and I called 911. And five of them, and I'm sure my family, were damn happy when Granville showed up. They were there oh, a good 20 minutes before Werva showed up. Not that that's Werva's problem, it's logistics. I mean, they're on the other side of the mountain. And like, I agree with Kevin, that's not a lot of money, not for peace of mind and for getting help when somebody needs it.
Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, listening to what Patty has written, and I assume is the statement of the Select Board, it sounds to me more like a punishment. And it's a punishment to the Granville group who have been very, very responsive to the needs of Rochester. And what is a person's worth? $3,000 when we divide it in the people in this town? I think what Kevin has offered is something that we all ought to stand up and vote for.
Larry, man, okay.
Larry Strauss. So I'd just like to talk about two things. I'm basically, you know... I'm basically in agreement that we should fund the Granville request, but I also want to just talk to the technical point that the select board budget is a lump sum, that the select board is not required to spend in accordance with the individual budget lines of the budget. So I just want everyone to realize that adding thirty-five hundred dollars to the budget does not require the select board to direct it towards Granville. And they could just as well deduct thirty-five hundred dollars from anyplace else in the current budget and leave it at its current funding rate. There's no requirement, once we appropriate funds in this budget article, that the select board direct each dollar to the individual line items as outlined in the budget. But I think it would be politically wise for them to do so. But there's no requirement for them to do so. And there is a difference between transport and first response. And I think that, I think that they're both critical needs, but they're different needs. And a robust first response is just as important as transport. And they shouldn't be misunderstood as the same thing. They're both extremely important.
Time to do.
I'd like to ask a question. How do you expect them to upgrade on less money?
Can you repeat the question from your mic?
A baby question was, how do you expect them to upgrade for less money? Which is a logical question, yeah. I suppose the, after a long discussion at the budget meetings, the motivation for this was actually to just inspire a little more attention and bring attention and discussion to the whole issue and hopefully, like the conversations about expanding, you know, the costability of Werva working with them to possibly have an ambulance, a transportable ambulance located in this valley like we used to have with the rescue squad would be an ideal outcome. And so this was, was meant to serve as, as just to shake things up and inspire conversation and bring attention and appreciation to what we do have, and we're thankful for it.
Hi, Mason?
Yeah, Zach. Did the select board consider asking the public trust fund to help out in this situation? I mean, last year we did twelve thousand for heating fuel for the building we don't own. I mean, three thousand from the trust fund would have been a good use.
We're always asking the trustees of public funds some more money.
Further discussion?
I think, I think there's some clarification on how this all came about. We were in the thrills of the budget and finance meetings. We started them in September. We requested that all departments send their budgets into us, and then we start going through them piece by piece. A couple of years ago, we switched Granville to, from appropriation to the general fund, and we also did that with Werva because we considered them emergency services. We had requested Granville to come in to talk about their budget with the budget finance committee and the select board, and we just didn't have time to have them in, and we had a lot of questions. We had a lot of complaints that they weren't showing up for calls, so we had to make a decision. And we had to put a budget before the committee and before the select board to adopt so we could get it in print. And this was how it came about. And it brought out the conversation. We knew this was going to happen, and we were glad it did. So I had no problem putting the money back in, but I think in the future it needs to be transparent on how they run their business, and we need to know how it goes. And that's just the way it is with the budget and finance, and that's how it came about. We didn't do it to punish them, we just did it because we didn't know where the money was from.
Hi, Frank.
I'd like to add for a recent amendment of the amendment, I'd like to move the question.
Okay, so the amendment is to increase the amount of Article Five by an amount of three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight. Do I have that number right? Okay.
Article four.
Article four. Sorry, Article four. By an amount of three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight. And questions be called? All in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, want to continue debating, say nay. Okay, questions be called? We'll have a vote on the amendment. The amendment is to increase the amount of Article Four under the authorization of the highway and general fund expenditures by an increase of three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the article is amended. And I think my math is okay. Is anyone else done math? Nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen. Somebody check that? Right, it'll be the amount they raise by taxes. And the same amount for the expenditures. Increase of same amount.
Say that number again?
Yeah, tell us about your change.
Which number do you want?
I was looking for the shall be raised by taxes.
Three thou, uh, the number to be raised by taxes is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven, plus three thousand, two hundred and forty-eight.
Nine, nine twenty-five, fifty.
Okay. And then can you add that same amount to the expenditures of one point three nine?
One, three, one, six, five, two, five.
One, three, one, six.
Five, two, five.
Five.
One, three, one, six, five, two, five.
Got it, okay. Article Four is amended. Shall the voters authorize total highway and general fund expenditures of one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, of which nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen shall be raised by taxes. Alright. We have to move, move that and second it? We're gonna remove that. Jeff and Sandy, discussion? Yes, Tim?
Hi, Tim Crowley. You know, the, oftentimes, we get sort of caught up in a rabbit hole of, you know, three thousand dollars and whatever that, those numbers come out to. What I'm hearing is a bigger issue. This harkens back to the days of, you know, the rescue squad when it was our neighbors who were there to, to take care of us. And we've, over the years, really surrendered, you know, local control of our own care. And now we contract it out at a, at a hefty price. And we could probably debate whether that's more money or less money, or good, gooder or better, or not better service. What I would ask the select board to do now is consider the question is, what is the vehicle that we have as a community to facilitate this relationship between these folks in Granville who are really trying hard but apparently not succeeding at the level we'd like, I guess? And hook them up with Werva, people to whom we pay considerable dollars. I could be telling you something that you already know, but it sounds to me like, I mean, this is an important matter, one that I don't want us to resolve over debates about three thousand dollars and people missing budget meetings, but one that says, we care about the first response to people here in Rochester. And I guess I'm wondering, what is the vehicle that we have as a community to make sure that somebody is spearheading that relationship and encouraging this group in Granville and Werva to do what we need here in Rochester?
Yes, actually, it is on the agenda to appoint a representative to the Granville First Response next week, and we've already been in contact with Werva, so that's, it's on.
Further discussion on the article as amended? Seeing none, we'll move to, end discussion and move to a vote. I'm gonna read the article again. Shall the voters authorize total highway and general fund expenditures of one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, of which nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen shall be raised by taxes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the article passes. Article Five, shall the voters appropriate forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five towards operating expenses of the Rochester Public Library? Move in second, please? Okay, moves? Burma seconds?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing no discussion on this article, we'll move to vote. Shall the voters appropriate forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars towards operating expenses of the Rochester Public Library? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the Article Five passes. Article Six, shall the voters appropriate twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars to continue funding the North Star recycling program from July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four? Move and second, that's what we need now. Martha moves? Seconded by Sandy, thank you. Discussion?
I just wanted to say how lucky I feel that we have people that are there every Saturday to town office. They're, you know, not only is it a valuable service for all of us, but I have trouble coming around sometimes, and they're very kind to help me with stuff I do. And it's just, it's just, it's a good service for our town, really, to have them.
Further discussion? Yes, thank you. Frank, yeah, you hand it up?
I mean, that's just why it was known for anyhow. Even if it's North Star, it's not just North Star, this, I think, would also be one people's club. So it's a real, it's a federal service, every, you know, every first, you know, every first Saturday and every third Saturday. So it's, 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 alright? Oh, I don't know. Sorry, I, they pick on. Anyhow, but I'm saying it's recycling and also pick up a guy for the same.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote on Article Six. Shall the voters appropriate twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars to continue funding the North Star recycling program from July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article Six passes. Article Seven, shall the voters appropriate eight thousand dollars to fund the reappraisal reserve fund? Moved by. Okay?
Yep.
And this is going to be moved by Burma and seconded by Catherine. Discussion on this article? And Frank, one more question.
Now, what is, so there's a reappraisal, what, within what timeframe? And what is, what is triggering that?
The state of Vermont sets pretty much a lot of the tax rates for education based on the appraised value of our property. That's the most important part. When our property values, as they set in place, are not below a certain threshold, then the state actually will call us to do a reappraisal. Back in the day, reappraisals were automatically done every ten years. So we have this double whammy coming at us, that our common level of appraisal has dropped to an area that would be close to us needing to have a reappraisal called. And we, our last reappraisal was done in twenty twelve. Perhaps we could speak more on that. But in anticipation of that, the state does give us funding towards this of, I think it's over six thousand dollars a year. But if we have to start doing a reappraisal within the next year or two, we still won't have enough money to, to complete the process. So we're, we're saving up for what inevitably seems to be a reappraisal coming at us in the next couple of years.
Nancy?
No, the question was, ask my question.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Catherine, did you have?
During the pandemic, there was extreme escalation of, of the market value of a lot of our homes. Has that affected the result of lowering our, our appraisal, was price being lower than it should be? So, will it not level out over the next couple of years? And will we then just pay higher taxes because the property that sold during the pandemic?
The taxes are based on what the budget is. So taxes wouldn't necessarily go up because of the value of your house. If the values move, the tax rate moves with it. We just need to generate this amount of money. Values of real estate have been higher in the last couple of years. We are actually pretty lucky because some towns have jumped way beyond the threshold and are experiencing a pretty large tax rate hike for the education tax because of that. So if we, if we hold on and all your values go down, yeah, it could, it could possibly turn around. I'm not sure, what is our C. L. A. right now? Eighty?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven percent. If drops down below seventy-five, which many other towns have, then it would pretty much trigger a reappraisal. So it could go back up in the next couple of years. It's, it's a market, so.
Further discussion? No further discussion, we'll move to a vote on Article Seven, shall the voters appropriate eight thousand dollars to fund the reappraisal reserve fund? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article Seven passes. Article Eight, shall the voters approve the creation of a Skate Space Donation Reserve Fund and authorize transfer of the donations received from the Muscoma Bank GoFundMe account and monies previously appropriated by the town for Skate Space? Martha moves? Seconded by Catherine. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to a vote on Article eight, shall the voters approve the creation of a Skate Space Donation Reserve Fund and authorize transfer of the donations received from the Mascoma Bank GoFundMe account and monies previously appropriated by the town for Skate Space? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article eight passes. Article nine, shall the voters approve the creation and appropriate $12,000 to Highway Grant Projects Reserve Fund? Moved by Burma, seconded by Catherine. I think I saw, you might have been scratching your head, but you got seconded with that. Kelly?
Do we have an explanation of the fund?
An explanation of the fund?
This grant project reserve fund was put in place at the advice from the budget finance. And basically what it is, is when we receive a grant or when we apply for grants, there is a matching funding that goes along with those grants. And in the past, since COVID and during COVID, we had grants that traveled over a couple different years. And so some of the matching money is, it's kind of in a gray area where we don't really know. We couldn't move it in between two years. And so we decided to establish this reserve fund grant, so to cover those expenses during a calendar year or a fiscal year. And that's what this is. There is some in the, in the road budget that's at the bottom of, for last year that they put in, but they never marked the fund as a reserve fund. So this is just to cover any grants that we get for highway projects, that we have to pay a match of 10 to 20% of the grant. And, and it's an estimation that we use for the grants that we have coming up for this fiscal, this budget year. That answer your question?
Thank you.
Yep.
Kelly?
That's what I was going to ask the same thing, thank you, Frank.
Further discussion on the article? No discussion, we will move to vote. Article nine, shall the voters approve the creation and appropriate $12,000 to the Highway Grant Projects Reserve Fund? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the article nine passes. Article 10, shall the voters appropriate $1,000 to fund the Tennis Reserve Fund? Moved by Barbara, seconded by Leslie, thank you. No discussion, we'll go to a vote. On Article 10, shall the voters appropriate $1,000 to fund the Tennis Reserve Fund? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Article 10 passes. Article 11, shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sums as requested by these community agencies? Central Vermont Council on Aging, $3,000. Claremont, Clare, Claremont Center, $2,066. Greenup Vermont, $100. Orange County Parent-Child Center, $250. Quintown Senior Center, $9,849. Safe Line Incorporated, $250. Tri Valley Transport from the Stagecoats, $1,300. Vermont Rural Fire Hydants, $100. Vermont Visiting Nurse, excuse me, Visiting Nurse Association, $4,800. White River Partnership, $875. Women's Safe, $250. A total of $22,840. Moved by Catherine, seconded by Joe, thank you. Discussion on this article? Yes, Frank?
Where are these figures coming from? The, the agencies?
Yeah, these, these figures are from the agencies requesting the money. And they are level funded from the previous budget.
Further discussion? No further discussion, we will move to votes on Article 11. Shall the voters vote to appropriate the following sums as requested by these community agencies? And if there are no objections, I'll just give you the total, $22,840. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, Article 11 passes. Article 12, to transact any other legal and proper business brought before said meeting.
Yes. So currently, since Dick Robato stepped down from being our emergency management coordinator, the select board has been filling that role by default. But we are definitely open and soliciting interested in anyone else that would like to step up and take that position. You don't have to do anything unless there's an emergency. But you don't have to make that decision tonight, but you can do.
What's the title? One sec. What's the title?
That'd be Emergency Management Coordinator.
And a hand over here. Yeah, Dick?
I think he's, yeah, I'll thank our town highway crew for breaking out.
Unfortunately, I don't think any of them are here to hear that. They're all out working, they're sleeping here.
Catherine, did you have something?
Well, having been part of the COVID-19 Task Force, I, I just wanted to thank Vic for his years of service in that role. And so I know, in the event of an emergency, what that could entail. So I hope that you find a good candidate.
Any other business to, right before the group? Yes, sir.
So Catherine and I are here tonight as co-chairs of the High School Repurposing Committee. We put a four-page report in your booklet, and then there's a two-page addendum with cost detail, repair costs for the building. We just wanted to take the opportunity to respond to any questions people may have or comments about the project. We had intended that there would be a vote on it about the town except acquiring or not acquiring this month. That's not going to happen. We just don't have enough information about the condition of the building and the environmental assessment of the building and the grounds to provide an informed update of the condition of the building. And the process is underway with involvement of the state environmental conservation department and other state agencies. We don't anticipate that information is going to be available until later in the summer. So we're anticipating that the vote that we've been talking about for the past, we don't know, couple of weeks, it's probably not going to happen until later in this year. So let me just pause with that and see if there are any questions about the project
So as the project progress, is it going to be a mission?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, the question is whether or not there would be informational meetings about the project as it progresses. The answer is yes. They will be warned and made publicly available, either having here or Zoom or both in some fashion, so people can participate.
We also have monthly meetings that are now being worn, and you can participate in those meetings. You go to the website, too, you can be a part of a regular email list, because we try to generate monthly reports on the project updates, so that things are transparent. I think one of the last times we, of course, we presented publicly in July, the feasibility study, and we've been regularly attending both board meetings and select board meetings to bring updates, working with both, both systems. And we are, at this point, feeling like we've really got the floodway issue resolved with a property boundary adjustment. And I think now it's back in the, in the school's attorney's court to finalize all of that. We recently, on February 10th, met with John Booker Campbell, who is the floodplain manager for this region, because the building took water in through that door during Irene. And the consultant architect, Rick Gossins, who was part of the feasibility study team, has put forth multiple suggestions for mitigation, and that's being reviewed right now. We're hoping to have a meeting of Bryce Vincent, who is the state environmental officer, John back again, and an engineer from Dubai King, who's been doing all the surveys for us, to sort of really hone in on a final decision that will best mitigate the floodplain issue, but also retain the, the use of the auditorium. So it's a long process. We're really navigating the regulatory landscape that we didn't anticipate when we got involved in this, but we're learning a lot as we go along. I think it's interesting to note that to date, we have received funding in the amount of $91,900 some dollars towards this project through various grants and agencies, and also private funding. The, the heat task force, which includes members of the repurposing committee and the school board, has raised to date $10,535, the Rochester portion of it, and there's more activities being planned. Do you want to speak to those additional activities, fundraising activities that are being planned? Leslie's got, oh, she doesn't want to speak. Anyway, stay tuned, they look like they're going to be very good, so.
Would you talk about the project manager, who that person is, and what your project manager is doing?
So, so we had some planning grant funds remaining after the feasibility study, and the town hired Liz Curry, who has a company called Common Lands, L Limited or something like that. And she was brought onto the project to help establish a roadmap. And she said to us at our last recent meeting, that the committee themselves has really been working successfully with various agency representatives, and that until we resolve the floodplain issue, she didn't feel that she could take us any further. And we asked her, in her experience, which is mainly private development, had she ever done the A factor analysis that is necessary for HUD? And she said, no, that we walk away at that point. So she really doesn't have the kind of experience that this, this project is at right now. And it's also a community-driven project, we're not a private development. So Liz, we will return to Liz once we resolve this, but we reached a place where it didn't make sense to put any more money, since we're going to have to put money in other places.
We have to get by this floodplain issue, find a solution that's going to work for the regulatory practice, then revisit the issue project manager, who, what kind of talent do we, and where would we get the money to pay for it?
I just want to add something to this, and I'm glad that so many people are here to hear it. Catherine and Vic, over the last three years, have spent hundreds of hours researching this project and doing all the groundwork up to this day. They have met with numerous agencies and officials and have gone through, Catherine has written many grants, and they have worked in really, in creating a body of information that all of us can rely on and return to, to educate ourselves, to inform ourselves to what's involved with this project. There is a lot going on with it, it's a complicated issue, the agencies are so, it's bureaucracy, so you can just imagine. And they've been dealing with it. And it's benefited not only for us, but the town in general, because somebody would have to be doing this information in order to inform us, what do we do with this building? Because we all want to make an educated, you know, decision about this, and not just have it be an emotional response of how much we love this school, or how much we hate this school. We want to have the figures and the information there to make that decision. And they have done the work. So I just want to applaud both of you. It's tremendous, and it's not over with. And if we just look around here at the auditorium itself, to what we have right now, the thought of not having this would be heartbreaking for most of us. There are so many memories that take place here, but it's not about the memories, it's about how do we move forward in this town? What do we want to offer anyone else, not only who is here, but who we would like to come here and enjoy this community as much as we do? Because we all love it here. And this is a really big asset that I think all of us would tremendously miss if it wasn't here. But I just want to say, I so applaud the work that you do, and I think we're all benefit from it. So that's my say on it, folks.
Any other business to come before said meeting? Larry?
Yeah, Larry, and with the permission and good grace of my neighbors here, I'll take that responsibility to act as coordinator for emergency services. I hope there's some training.
Business, yes.
Hi, I'm Sophie Settleman. I have just one question, and it's about public bathrooms. So many people come to town and there's no public bathrooms. Is there any discussion about public bathrooms? And if there were, where would it begin?
Do you have money in the budget that keeps going up for a selection of porta-potties that be put around town in the summer? And like with the last year and the year before, that we started putting one off the park and the more centrally located, as well as down by the tennis courts, and there's the one adjacent to the fire station. But, yeah, that's, that's a problem. We have talked about it, I mean, I was, got about the old fire station, maybe, but, you know, it's, it gets complicated. Gets to be a, no, I won't say that.
Anything else to go to the group? Yes, Dee?
Kate Mandell, I'm part of the housing committee, chief of the repurposing committee, and I want to invite you all to the Hey Neighbor event, which has been graciously offered by the fire department, to have a, a place where we can all come from 11 to 3 on March 12th, to discuss, we're actually looking for new neighbors who, who have showed up here in the last three or four years, and also all the other services that are provided in this town. So the services will be, they'll have tables, there'll be a touch of truck by the fire department, and we really appreciate the, the use of the firehouse. I just wanted to give you all a warm welcome down there. I just wanted to give you all a, a warm welcome down there and hope you can show up for an open house and tell all your neighbors, the new people in town, we would love to see you.
Anyone else? Before we entertain a motion to adjourn. Kelly?
I would move, move to the chair.
All in favor? Anyone opposed to that? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.